Two, one, you are live.
Great, well, welcome everyone in the audience and on livestream. I'll call to order the meeting of Tuesday, October 12th. Our first item on the agenda is our public hearing, so we will receive public comment on the special town meeting warrant articles to be voted on by referendum on November 2nd. John, turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So, we have four articles tonight for this public hearing. And if we go one by one, I think through those.
Let's do that.
The first article, Article Two, is, "Shall the Town Authorize the Select Board to Enter Under a Contract with Engineering and Design Professionals to Prepare Documents for Future Consideration of a New Fire Station in West Rockport on Terms and Conditions that the Select Board Determined to Be in the Best Interests of the Town." This is an effort that has been underway for some time. We've put together a task force of interested citizens, members of the fire department, Chief Peaslee, some members of the Select Board here who have participated in a liaison role. And effectively, the next step in that process is to move forward to hire design professionals, effectively, to figure out what would this process, what would this building look like? And to establish, effectively, the starting point of the community to have the conversation as to size, scope, building, whether or not the town wishes to pursue a new fire station in West Rockport. The idea would be, this would merely be the design portion of that. These monies are already budgeted in this year's fiscal budget, fiscal '22 budget, so there are no additional funds that would come into this. What this question does effectively do is it checks in with the voters and the residents just to ask, do we wish to move to the next phase of that process? However, there isn't, there's one more phase, which is the one where everyone will probably be most interested, which is, what does the building look like? What is the cost? What are the particulars? And that's really what this question sets up, is having that conversation and giving those answers to the voters, so they can make an informed choice, I expect, at this time next year in November '22. So, that's effectively what this Article Two provides. Certainly have, and then hand it over to you.
Right, are there any comments from the public? Anyone that has questions or comments regarding Article Two? Is there anything on livestream?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to Article Three.
Okay, Article Three. Shall the Town authorize the Select Board for a sum not to exceed $35,000 from the town's unassigned fund balance to enter into agreement with New Height Group for the purposes of providing a market survey to evaluate development feasibility, develop a conceptual site program, and to work with professionals to create conceptual renderings for the former Rockport Elementary School site on terms and conditions that the Select Board determine to be in the best interests of the town to maximize the value of the property to benefit Rockport taxpayers. So, this, somewhat similarly to Article Two, comes about from the work of the RES Task Force, which was established by this board and working under the Economic Development Committee for town. They had met over a period of years, at one point offering a request for qualifications prior to the pandemic, of course, that process being problematic of sorts. And they kind of reconfigured in this new, I don't want to say post-pandemic world, but in this revived world that we're living in now, and put together this recommendation. So, our economic, so Brian Dankaus, our economic development guru of sorts, is here, our planner, Orion Thomas, Amanda Dwali, one of our co-chairs of our, or chair, I'm not sure which it's co or full chair, but one of the key forces in that task force. And they're here to certainly provide additional insight in terms of the RES Task Force work. And we also have Erin Cooperider from the New Height Group. So, if it'd be okay, I'd like to have at least Amanda or Brian at least speak to how the RES Task Force perhaps provided this recommendation to the Select Board, which then moved forward, and you placed on the ballot here. And then Erin, provide a little bit of interest in terms of the work of the New Height Group and how their process would work here in the town of Rockport. So, that's all I have.
Brian?
Hello, Rockport members. As John said, I'm Brian Dankaus, Economic Development Specialist with the town of Rockport's Planning and Community Development Office. I guess I'll just kind of repeat what John had said, was that the, in August, the, after, I think it was actually back in March, we, the town invited developers to submit letters of interest to work with the town to redevelop the RES site. And we had two developers respond or provide letters of interest. We met with both in the task force in August, we met with the developers in June. In August, the task force recommended to the Economic Development Committee that the Select Board authorize the town to engage with New Height Group to, and then subsequent to that, the New Height Group provided us with a proposal for next, you know, steps for a process. And the, and the task force essentially recommended to the Economic Development Committee, who recommended to the Select Board, that we engage New Height Group to complete Phase One of their proposal, which was dated August 25th. And because there was, you know, a cost attached to that, you know, it had, it had to be approved by voters, and that's, so that's why we're here today, tonight, a public hearing on the November 2nd vote. So, I don't know if people have any questions for me, or, as John said, Erin Cooperider here, she's a principal of New Height Group, so. But, in short, I mean, I think that the task force and the Economic Development Committee felt like there was one developer that submitted a letter of interest that was clearly, you know, qualified to do the work, was interested in working with the municipality, and had experience working in a public-private partnership to redevelop, you know, sites for mixed uses. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, or hand it off to Erin, or however you want to do this.
Erin?
Maybe, maybe turn it over to Erin, so she can describe this part. Yes, great.
Good evening, Adam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the topic. I just wanted to say that New Height Group has been, most recently, working in Portland, but all of the folks in our team come from other places in Maine and have worked other places in Maine. So, we're very excited about the opportunity to work outside of Portland. And we have done a very similar project with the city of Brewer on an old school site that wanted to be redeveloped. And a number of things happened there. We created a municipal parking lot, we created some affordable housing, we created some sidewalks and connectivity with the recreational center, and the city's first bus stop, covered bus stop with solar lights. So, that was a long process, we understand it's a process. I wanted to just take, just a couple of minutes to say that we do not come here with an agenda for what should happen on the site. We know that there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of work that's already been done. So, we will take our direction from the townspeople. We envision a process that involves reaching out, you know, with an easy survey, having some targeted interviews with stakeholder groups, and, you know, we will hear from the townspeople who those stakeholder groups are. We're not going to tell you who they are. But the idea would be to cast as wide a net as possible, figure out what is really, what is really wanted here, and then test the fees, the economic feasibility of creating it. So, I'll just expose my bias, and that is that every town in Maine needs housing of some sort. Every town in Maine needs a variety of housing choice. So, you know, we would be surprised if it didn't all shake out, that one of the things that might happen here might be more housing. So, I'd be happy to take any specific questions you have.
I know we have some members of the public that had some comments, so I want to provide some time for that. So, thank you very much, Erin.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I might call you back for, from answers, but go ahead. If you could come to the podium and state your name.
Well, I don't know, saying this, I have a question.
Okay, sure. Oh, sorry, sorry about that.
I'm Frank Thorn, and I'm a resident here. I just, I wanted to ask her, really, do the issues that the town holds, like housing, which you mentioned, is there any plan that we try to solve that, all of those issues on this site, where we, is she, like, in the project like Brewer, interested in sort of looking at the whole series of assets that are in the town as a whole to solve those problems?
And you can come back up, sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I released you early.
I have a question, but, I mean, if housing, if housing is a clear issue in the, in the town, affordable housing, or worker housing, and so on, does that mean it gets solved on this site? Or do we look at a, at the whole panoply of possibilities within the town for where housing might go? And then look at other, you know, so, how do we jiggle all those pieces around?
I think the short answer, I didn't mean to suggest that housing is where it would land, I was just using it as an example of one of the things that almost every town needs some of. So, it's, it's one possibility. You know, I would say it's unlikely that we would be able to solve everything the town needs on the one site. What we expect will happen through this process is its highest and best use will sift through. You know, we'll take all of the ideas, and then we'll do some market testing and figure out, you know, if what's wanted is mixed-use development, for example, that has maybe retail on the first floor and housing above, you know, we'll be looking to see if we can really attract retailers, are the retailers that want to be in this location. You know, same thing with housing, it'd be looking at who, you know, what is needed, and who needs it, and how much is needed. Did that answer your question?
Yes, I'm not being, not making, trying to think, I'm not being here, but it seems like it's a, that is a key site, there are a lot of different pieces in play also in the town at large. And whether we're voting on sort of having New Height really just focus on that particular site, or to focus on the particular batch of issues that the town would really like to, you know, cover, and include some of the other inventories.
Yeah, if I, if I could maybe just try to help a little bit here, Frank. I, I think there's, there's actually two efforts that are going on at the same time, and both of them somewhat complement each other as well. So, on the, in this, in this particular instance, it's merely focused on that RES site over there on the, on the corner of Route 90 and 1. Concurrently, we also have the Comprehensive Plan Effort, which is, which is moving full steam ahead as well. And I think probably a lot of the grander concerns that we all have regarding housing, and I think general direction of our community, a lot of those can be pointed into that document. I think that that's, this is maybe one tool in the toolbox of items that we could use towards, working towards solutions. But I don't think the RES Task Force, and certainly Amanda, you can speak to this if you wish, but I don't think there was the intent that we, this would be a one-size-fits-all tool, as much as this is, as I said, one tool towards what obviously is a very complicated issue, that, you know, hits a number of communities all over the Maine coast, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Haley. I live on Mill Street, and I'm a member of the planning board as well. A couple of comments and questions, and I think it'll actually take into consideration what we just discussed, but one question would be, do you think the town can receive a fair, objective, and impartial study from a developer who's conceivably going to be involved in the project? As opposed to a third-party master planner, design company, to do this feasibility study? It's no slight against New Height, I'm familiar with some of the projects they've done in Portland, I think they're a very reliable candidate, but how can the town expect an impartial study from someone who's conceivably going to develop the project? Why not use a third-party master planner to do this?
Any comments?
Want to speak to that? Erin, or maybe even Brian, perhaps, or Amanda?
Are you okay, okay if I speak from here?
Go for it, yeah.
I think, can you be heard on livestream? I think you have to be at the mic to be heard.
Sorry, sorry, Erin.
No, no, it's fine.
I think that's a fair question. And I think what you'll get from a developer that you might not get from a planner is pro forma with numbers in it. I mean, our, what we think that we're bringing to you that's valuable is that sort of, what is it going to cost, and is it financially feasible? So, what we have proposed to do is a very small piece of work, and at the, at the end of the piece of work, we expect that the town will be in a position to put out an RFP, if they want to put out an RFP for developers. So, it's not a given that it would, the work would come to us, I don't think.
I guess my question would be, you know, if you hire Marriott Hotels to do a feasibility and market study, they're going to look through the lens of the parameters of their investment, you get a hotel project. If they're a residential and retail developer, through their lens, they're going to put it into their parameters, not in certain of the town's best interest, that's my concern.
Thank you.
And I have a couple of other ones on top of that, but thank you. So, another question is, why is the town paying for a developer's due diligence? For $35,000, if they're going to end up doing this project down the road, why is the town paying for their due diligence, their feasibility study, their conceptual plans? If we put it out to RFP, will the town pay for all the other developers' due diligence plans, costs as well? All of their bidders, and that give them an unfair advantage in the RFP process, and so you can have a fair and open RFP process with the town paying for their due diligence costs, but not other developers' due diligence costs?
The only thing I would perhaps add to this issue is, is the point of this process is, it's a stepped process, right? So, the first step of this process is effectively to end up with something that looks not on, not unlike what you would see from a master plan, right?
Sure, so then, should they be excluded from developing the property? How are they impartial if they can have a inside track to winning the RFP, winning the bidding process?
Sure, but let me, just to finish my point, though, I think what, what I'm trying to get at is, there is a period of, after that first phase is completed, it's up to the board, up to the RES Task Force, if so inclined, the Economic Development Committee and others, to weigh in on the deliverables provided by New Height Group. If there's a sense that perhaps the finger was on the scale, let's say, I mean, if that's the potential, there are steps, not only to decide whether or not that is something that the town wished to go forward with, but then further wishes for that to then go forward back to the voters. So, there's, this is, I agree with, you know, the concept of, this is, this is to prepare a plan, and there's a question as to validity of the plan, I suppose, right?
I see a question with the impartiality of the plan.
Sure, right. But then the question, I guess then what my, what I'm coming back to is, there is another step, and another couple steps in this process. One, for the board to, to look at that, is that the right plan for the town of Rockport? Two, then to then put that plan back before the voters, to say, is this the right plan that you, the voters, wish it to be? So, there's multiple steps along this way for, if there is a sense of that impartiality or, you know, that something isn't on the level, perhaps.
Wouldn't a master planner mitigate that risk?
Perhaps, perhaps.
Okay. I mean, I think taking into consideration what this gentleman asked previously, how does this fit into all the other projects? If you're looking at this just as a, as a one-off, I don't necessarily think you're going to get an accurate, impartial, and fair, objective analysis from this. I just, I don't see it. And furthermore, for the town to pay developers' due diligence costs is, that's not typical for municipality to do. I don't see the reasoning behind that, and I'm hoping for some answers to that.
Well, I mean, oh, Amanda, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, Erin, sorry.
Again, those are all fair questions. What I would say here is that you don't have a parcel of land for sale on the market. What you have is a parcel of land that has to have a fully developed plan and a town vote in order to sell it. So, that, that's a huge investment in time and energy that I don't believe you're going to get, people, you're not going to get developers flocking in here to do that before they know that they can do it as a right.
That a master planner would do that for cost? And this is a town, this is a question for the town, not for New Height.
Well, it's also a question for the voters.
Absolutely, that's what I'm getting at.
That's why we're leaving it to the voters.
Okay, I mean, to me, it seems like, all the information I've gathered today is that, it seems like New Height will have an inside track, and you're simply just asking the voters if we want to pay for New Height's due diligence costs.
We're, we're putting that out to the voters, we're not making that decision, we're asking the voters if they wish to pursue paying New Height to do that.
Okay.
And yet, but using the term due diligence, I think, I mean, what-
It's a feasibility study, it's a design concept, it's a market study.
It's a meeting with residents, it's finding out what the community wants, what's viable in the community.
This is not the proper path to do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments?
Hi, my name is Des Fitzgerald. I moved to Rockport just about a year ago, lived in Camden for about 40 years. I have a couple of observations. One is, in meetings that I've been in, and the conversations around this project, I've heard the term gateway to Rockport, the potential for this to be. And it sounded good in the initial hearing of that term, and there is no sort of place where you can go and enter Rockport if you're a tourist driving up Route 1. But I would submit that maybe the last thing we want in this town is traffic coming down Main Street. So, my caution is, if you're considering making this a gateway to Rockport, be aware that part of what we love about this town is the fact it's not choked with traffic the way Camden is. So, a gateway carries some leverage there. My other observation is, I've raised four kids in this community, they've all played on those fields. I think you're going to get pushback from some town members, myself included, around developing those fields. And if the town, if this is about economics, that's one thing. If it's about well-being and economics, I would submit that those fields are wonderful and a pleasure to look at, and I would, personally, I would skew the development to the RES site itself. Thanks.
Anyone else for comments? Go ahead.
I'm Jayon Rosenbaum. I've been involved with the RES site for, in its original site, for 10 or 15 years now, one way or another. We have put out requests for RFPs before, and we have never gotten any serious RFP. We had things like, turn this into a gymnas, the building into a gymnasium, and pay me to run it. Those are the kind of typical RFPs that we've had. This is an opportunity to have a study done by what appears from their website to be a company filled with interesting people with interesting backgrounds. I applaud the Select Board for choosing this group to look at, and I think that $35,000 is quite a reasonable investment. This is the most valuable piece of land that we have in town, and we need to be very careful. And when we've tried to do this ourselves, we've never had any sort of a serious offer from any sort of developer to do anything other than boat storage on, on that site. So, I think it's an opportunity for us to find out, and as they, as you've said, there are two or three times when the town gets to vote on whatever these ideas are. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I need this to be put into Mother Goose language, which was what Paul Gibbons always said when he was trying to explain things to people, I'm Marcia. I don't really understand what New Height is going to do for us, and I don't think the things that are stated in the question put to the public explain it, and I don't think they're entirely, it's worded in an entirely truthful way. I don't imagine any developer with millions of dollars to put into a project asking New Height what they should do. They know what they want to do, they know what they need to do to make some money and also create a big, a good project for the town. And so, I just think that having New Height work for us is just going to take a whole lot more time, and not really get us any closer to selling the property. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, are there any on livestream?
None.
None, okay.
Nope.
Then we will move forward to Article Four.
Okay, so Article Four reads, "Shall the following amendment to Section 405 of the town's land use ordinance be enacted?" Section 405 is amended to read, quote, "No land use regulation or amendment thereof shall be adopted until the Select Board of the town of Rockport has held a public hearing thereon at least 10 days before it is submitted to the legislative body for consideration. Public notice of the hearing shall be made at least seven days prior to the hearing. Amendments to this ordinance shall be considered following a citizen petition pursuant to Article Two, subsection 14 of the Rockport Town Charter, recommendation of the planning board, or motion of the board, Select Board. Petitioners are encouraged to work with and request assistance from the planning board so that proposed changes and amendments can be of greatest benefit to the citizens of Rockport. Petitioners shall be responsible for paying for all required advertisements and notifications." And our planner, town, town planner, Orion Thomas, is here, if we have any questions or thoughts.
Any comments, questions? Seeing none, move on to Five.
Article Five, "Shall an ordinance amending the town of Rockport land use ordinance in Section 700 zoning board appeals be enacted?" A full copy of that text is too long to include in the article, so, that's why it's not on the ballot.
Okay. Any questions for Article Five? All right, seeing none, that will close out our public hearing, correct?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will turn it over back to you, John, for your town manager's report.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, it's a very busy time in the town office, we have a lot going on, taxes are due this week, the first half of taxes are due, so there is a lot of activity and visitors, I suppose, to the office. So, make sure, if you have not yet paid your first half taxes, please do so. We also have election time that's coming, and not to mention, dog licenses are also on the list. So, a lot of things are happening at the town office. We had a public hearing on the 27th of this month, strange public hearing, but a public hearing nonetheless, with all the committees in town, very successful. We were locking the door at seven, at, the hearing started at 6:30, we locked the doors at 7:00. A very successful evening all around in my mind. There's, you know, a couple of other items in here, and certainly those who've read it certainly can ask any questions. Paving is going on at present, so it started last week, but we're in the midst of that now, so things are, things are happening on that end. I want to talk just real briefly, this afternoon, and Denise was in attendance at the meeting, so I'll perhaps, you know, allow her to kind of add her own spin on this, but as, as you all know, we convened a very special meeting of, of the Select Board at the end of August for the purposes of, a couple of purposes, but effectively for the purposes of approving of an application for ARPA funding through the county. That was probably the primary thrust, I suppose, of that evening. And today's county commissioners meeting today, the Knox County Commissioners decided to effectively throw out all broadband applications before them. Now, I certainly understand and provide the county the right to make the decisions as they need to, provide, you know, following the guidance of the federal government, as we all discussed. You know, there was a seven-page memo that you all had to read through that provided the parameters within which we can operate. And there's a lot of great ideas that we would like to have funded with those ARPA funds, but they certainly weren't in keeping with the legislation or the guidance from the Treasury Department. I'm incredibly frustrated, and quite frankly, incredulous, I suppose, at the idea that a well-researched and well-considered application by this town, the town of Rockport, one of the larger communities in Knox County, one of the largest taxpayers to Knox County, and our application was frankly discarded. And, and basically, without any discussion or discussion of merit at any, at any point. At no point was the town requested to provide more information, at no point did the town have received any sort of request for dialogue or further communication with the commissioners with which we could provide our own insight. Instead, the county commissioners seemingly operated- Instead, the county commissioners seemingly operated on their own, and one member in particular operated in such a way that I think was not becoming of their office and in the time which they had to consider our application. I understand there's differences of opinion in terms of what our, what our roles are and what, you know, priorities. Each of us probably up here have our own priorities of how we would spend those funds. But I would humbly request of an entity such as the Knox County Commissioners that they would work with us as a member, as a community, part of their, their charge and their responsibility to ensure that everybody's had their, their opportunity and had their opportunity to speak. And if the votes don't go our way, that's okay. But that didn't happen here. And I think that it was a really unfortunate opportunity for that that they turned down. And I think that that's something I would hope that in, as the county commissioners move forward in their work, they'll find more opportunities to work with communities like ours, as opposed to trying to find opportunities to divide and push us further away. We need to find ways to work together. There's a reason why counties receive that money. It's not because that's the best, the best opportunity in the state of Maine to hand out those funds. It's because we need to find ways to work together as communities. Regionalization is coming. It's here. We all have accepted it to varying levels in the county. But the inability to at least have a conversation about what does that mean for broadband? What does that mean for, you know, public works? What does it mean for sewer? What does it mean for all these different areas that people are discussing as part of their applications? There was an opportunity there for the county to take that, and instead, they cast us aside. And I, so it's not in the report because obviously it happened today.
It's disappointing.
But it was disappointing, and so forgive me for jumping on my soapbox a little bit, but there was a lot of effort that this board put in, staff put in, you know, individual members, MIDC.
Members of our community that have been working?
Yes, letters from, from business owners, residents. And again, I'm not saying that that, I'm upset with the fact that they didn't fund it. I've disappointed the process, and I think they could have undone it.
Did they not want to hear from anyone, or was we particularly singled out?
The meeting started because, late Friday, we got a copy of the agenda for the meeting. It wasn't posted on their website, and as of today, had not yet been posted. But Audra, you probably got one too, the town managers got them, so Audra sent us a copy of the agenda, and it showed Spectrum on the agenda to come in and tell the county about all the rural internet services that Spectrum provides. And so we emailed the county and said, hey, we think we should, you know, Rockport would like the opportunity to sort of weigh in on this issue. And a number of residents, you know, took time off from work. The meeting's at two in the afternoon, so it's not a convenient time. A lot of residents took time off to come and talk about their experience with Spectrum Internet. We were told that we would not be put on the agenda, but there's still the opportunity for public comment. So when we got there and raised our hands to make public comment, a motion was immediately made by one of the county commissioners to prohibit all public comment on broadband. And that was unanimously voted on by all three commissioners. So the ten public, you know, the ten residents, citizens of Knox County, who had taken time off, had come to talk, were not allowed to say a word.
I wonder if, and I'm not sticking up for them, but they've already engaged with the company to come, take that information, filter through it, and tell them what the best usage of it is. So I'm wondering if they were just putting off people until they heard back from, from the company. Just sort of being the devil's advocate there, but...
But you can sort of imagine, I mean, we always have an opportunity for public comment.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
And if you would just tell, and this was, this was a Camden select board member, Thomaston select board member, Rockland City Council member, and a Rockport select board member. None of us were allowed to talk. And then Spectrum had unlimited time to talk and was asked very friendly, engaging questions. And if you watch the live stream, it's frankly embarrassing, but, you know, I think on behalf, I think one of our county commissioners is just, we don't understand, but she's, you know, accused people who had sent her emails of bullying her when they're totally polite emails just expressing their view on the importance of broadband to this community. So it was really not a, it was very unpleasant. It was not how our county should be operating. And I think, as John points out, regionalization is our future. We cannot, none of us want to be, live in a state that's known as the oldest and poorest state in the country. That is not where we want to be. But if we don't get something going in terms of economic development and broadband, we don't, how do we dig ourselves out?
All right, John, anything else for your town manager's report? Thank you for the update on that, by the way, and you're right, it is very disappointing.
Yes. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Is there any public input to non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. That takes us to our consent agenda.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second on that?
Second. Since John's not here.
That's right. He's not here tonight. Any discussion? All in favor? Or, thank you, that passes. And it is six-thirty-six. Okay. That moves us to our action items. Our first is to act on the application for Thomas Kennedy for the Recreation Committee alternative. Thomas, come on up.
Hi. Just tell us a little bit about yourself. Thomas Kennedy, I've been a Rockport resident off and on ever since I was about seven years old. The off part being when I went to college and then a year down in Freeport. So now I'm back in Rockport, hope to be here for the rest of my life. So I've played on, you know, Jason Peaslee approached me about volunteering for the committee, so I've played on these fields ever since I was in second grade, so up until I was about nineteen years old doing senior bay brews. So certainly an interest to me to see that these fields and whatever recreational areas in the, or spaces in this area need to help out with that, so.
Right, well, we appreciate it. Any questions for Tom? Is it Tom or Thomas?
Thomas, please.
I move the board, I move the board to appoint Thomas Kennedy II to the Recreation Committee as an alternate member, alternate with the term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
I got here, I got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Great, well, thank you. Welcome aboard. We appreciate you volunteering.
Yeah, no problem.
Sure, Jason will be very happy. All right. Okay, next item we have is to act on use of recreation reserves. John, Jason, who would like to walk us through this?
So this is a, there's a two-part, and B works with C, and C works with B, so...
Yes.
Effectively, when we started reconfiguring committees, Chief Peaslee, I, I had known, had been involved in that prior effort to kind of restart the fields, three, four years ago, maybe, something like that? Four, okay. And, and I knew that we needed some new energy. If there's nothing our fire chief has as energy, and I knew he'd be the man for the gig. We needed, I knew we needed the Recreation Committee to be restarted. We had a set of fields there that, they were tired, they needed work. Twenty-five years old. I'm too old to have played on those fields, but, but not by much, so it's really important that, I felt that the town needed a plan. And so Chief was willing, I guess, to accept my, my ask of him. And he has worked tirelessly to reinvigorate, not just getting members of the committee, but also putting their plan to, I think, put, put the costs where they need to be, which is back into the field, and create a plan that works not just, not just for, for today, but works, you know, into the future. So Chief, do you want to come up and maybe just talk about what your plan is and what the committee, how the committee's working, just to add on to what I'm saying? Because I can talk, but I'd rather, you're the one that's talking to all these entities even more, so.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it, sir. As John had mentioned, he tapped my shoulder a while back and asked me to look into the Marge Jones, i.e. Recreation Committee. Four years ago, when my son played, the fields at that time were playable but not safe. The infield's that were supposed to be dirt were grass. They weren't being maintained. The fences were breaking. There were zip ties holding things together. So when John asked me to take the reins as the town liaison, I said I would do it, but if I'm going to do it, I'm jumping in all the way, and we're going to do this. I quickly reached out to the previous board members. Several had moved on, so we removed them, or they removed themselves. I reached out to people in the community, and three people stepped up immediately. And then Thomas Kennedy and I, one more that potentially is going to be joining, said, let's do this. To start, I went over to the fields and took, I don't think there's pictures provided, but I've taken pictures of the whole property. I have the original paperwork from the state from when this property was acquired, the layout of the field. It's a little over twenty-five years now, from the original construction. With anything, if you don't maintain things, they fall into deplorable conditions. Your house has to be maintained. These fields have had, well, the first, I believe it was eight, ten years. We were fortunate enough that Tom Farley's kids were going through school, and he donated a ton of mowing and maintenance. They took care of it for many years. Once the Farley's kind of moved on, then things have progressively gotten worse. This is coming from my assistant chief, whose son played, from then. They just keep getting worse and worse. No one's maintaining them. The town hasn't been maintaining it to the level that anybody, or I don't feel, is adequate. So in those pictures, there's at least six gates that are bent and are completely broken. There's gaps underneath the fence in the infield playing area of at least twelve inches where if a kid was to slide, their leg would go under and most likely break. There's gates that are completely missing. There's posts that don't have caps on them. The dugouts are rotting all around the bottom. Again, this is a wood material that's been there, from what I understand, almost twenty-five years. The equipment sheds, again, they're small, they're four by six. They are in the same condition. They're starting to leak. The basketball courts have not been touched in any way, shape, or form, from my understanding, in all twenty-five years, meaning they have not been resurfaced. There's huge gaps, there are cracks in it, up to three inches in some areas. Tennis courts have been worked on a little bit, some cracks filled. However, all the netting is completely ripped. I'm not sure what you call it. I'm not a tennis player. There's a backboard that they hit into is rotten. The flagpole, I'm not sure why, was put at the entrance to the facility, so when all of the sports play and they do the anthem, you can't even see the flag. It's way out front. So we're looking at relocating that as well. All the foul poles are made out of four-by-four wood, twenty-five years old in the ground. They are, some of them are almost completely rotten. The third baseline right now on two of the fields is complete grass. It's supposed to be dirt. So with all these pictures, I reached out to Sports Field of, our Sports Field of Maine. They are currently the only business that really does this. I had the owner and his son come in. They did some work four years ago, but it was a bare basic, let's just get it fixed for the time being. He's been absolutely awesome to work with. He has given me, I have stacks of different types of proposal from the bare basic, just to get some of it going, to the creme de la creme. I met with Estee from Tom Fence, again, one of the only few around here. We did an absolute walkthrough. There was a proposal of two-hundred thousand to redo the whole facility. He said that's absolutely not even needed. For the twelve-thousand-three-hundred dollars, he can get that back to exactly the way it should be. And with a yearly contract, he could maintain the fence in the spring, after the fall, or after the winter, and in the springtime, you get them all back. I met with Tom Farley and his crew about the irrigation system. Again, this is a system that wasn't drained properly throughout the years. The controllers are twenty-plus years old. A whole new system would be put in. It's only eight-hundred dollars for the system, but it can be monitored by his crew twenty-four hours a day. So if it's raining, they can go onto their phone and they can shut the system down so it doesn't water. It will put a new emergency valve in where if one of the heds would break, as it's done twice on the softball field and flooded it, the valve would shut the system down immediately, and it would send notification to the crew at Farley, and they'd be able to come out and maintain it. I've met, I've spoke with Clean Woods about the Porter Johns. There's been some issues last year. They didn't come until, I think, two or three weeks after the season because no one had reached out to them. So we're trying to get a contract so that they will come in on a yearly basis, two weeks before Little League starts, so that the Porter Johns will be in place. The mowing, Hedge from Electric just donated timing material to put all brand-new outlets beside the dugouts and below all the scoreboards for the new auto mowers that Farley and his son is going to be using next year. So he donated that. All the signage is original over there, twenty-five years old. Dale Landreth and his wife were generous enough to do a complete donation of one-hundred percent of all the signs, including out by the road, all the way in through the entire facility. I just got the notification that those are done, so we'll be able to redo all of the signage. I know Craig Mitchell's going to be come doing, coming in to do Rockport landscape, landscaping out by the sign to re-vitalize that. There's a lot of other things, small things, that, you know, we're working on, but unfortunately, for the last ten years, things have just not been taken care of or monitored, and it's gotten to the point where it's a safety hazard for not only the kids, but for adults playing basketball, adults playing tennis. If it's not maintained and someone gets injured, as we know in this society, everybody's too happy. It's just a huge liability. So the town, in my opinion, needs to make the decision to keep the property. If we are, then we need to start maintaining it properly on a yearly basis. And I'm not saying we got to roll out the lights and the astroturf, but we got to make it so that the kids can play safely, the adults can play safety, safety, safely, and other people can enjoy it. I mean, I see people there walking the dogs on a daily basis. The garden's over there now, so there's a lot of activity over there. The downfall with the Marge Jones facility versus the RES site, everybody sees the RES site. They see the kids out there because it's Route Ninety and Route One. Nobody sees Marge Jones because you can't see in there. But that field is used every single day, day and night, with people from the community. So it's important that this gets taken seriously and some decisions get made to hopefully get this place back to where it is. So that's where I'm at with it at this time.
I just want to commend you on the amount of work you've done in a very short amount of time. And I know you have a lot of passion, and I know that you're a hard worker, and I appreciate you getting on this. I did take a ride in there the other day. I'll tell you, I haven't been in there for a while. It looks very tired. It looks very dated. It looks very unsafe. So thank you for getting on that.
I know one thing that I've talked with John about what I'd like to do, hopefully once things get going, is next spring, is have someone come in and thin all the trees from the road in so that people driving by will be able to see that there's, you know, a hundred vehicles in there and that there's kids playing. Plus, it'll dry out that entire, it's built in a swamp, basically. It'll help dry it. Everything that gets cut will be chipped and put back in, so it'd also be a place where people walk dogs. So I think it'd be nice to open that area back up in there as well, so that's something that we're looking at doing.
And thank you, by the way, because when we were doing the budget process and they brought up that two-hundred thousand dollar number, I'm going, why do you wait until things go to hell so you need two-hundred thousand dollars? I walked over in February, took pictures, took it back to Bill, and, and not only that, but taking care of things, we had a, we had a riding lawnmower setting out all winter over there. So we're not taking care of things, whether it's the property or equipment. And we got to start doing that or we get behind the eight ball.
And the Tom Fence people said the same thing. That fence lasts longer than anybody on this planet, if it's maintained on a yearly basis and taken care of. He goes, that galvanized is never going to go away as long as you take care of it, keep it adjusted.
Fix it.
There are pieces that are going to break. He goes, that's part of kids, but two-hundred thousand, I think it's twelve thousand, I have it here somewhere, but it's twelve-thousand-three-hundred. But that's a complete, taking the, the female, the girl softball backstop down that is completely bent through, replacing it, putting a new bar in, and fixing the two dugouts and straightening all the gates and everything. So that's everything done.
And the fencing on the tennis part where the, it's waterlogged plywood that's up there.
That's a separate line.
And it's bending, the heft of it is bending the fence out some.
That's in my other list that I have. That's going to be, I think it's, I don't remember my glasses, go figure. But that is also in there to replace, I think it's four sheets of plywood, take those down, reinstall them, have them sprayed. When we spray the dugouts at the same time, we're keeping the same color scheme.
We had, we had, two years ago, we went over there on the basketball courts where the roses come up through.
Yes.
We, we had trees as big round as my thumb that had grown through the bottom of the fence because nobody ever takes care of it.
MRC's also donated brand-new nets. We're not putting them up this year because he said they should be coming down soon, so this spring we'll have brand-new netting. And again, I don't play tennis. I guess there's supposed to be an anchor in the middle that holds the net in the middle down. They're going to install that. They're gonna install that for us as well, so that's set up as well.
Thanks to all these community members you've reached out to too, I mean, you've had great response. That's wonderful. All right, well, then, does someone wanna make a motion here?
Remove the board, authorize an expenditure of up to twenty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars from the Recreation Field Reserve to provide maintenance and upkeep, repair to the field and its facilities.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope, we're very happy we're getting there.
And it takes a lot of work to get to this point, so.
And I do wanna mention that part of this process is the fundraising that we're trying to get out there as well. We've had a, a large number of donors that have stepped forward. We are building three brand-new, I just submitted a request through Scott to get a building permit, three building permits for three eight-by-eight sheds, to build new sheds, the current ones, a grown adult can't even walk inside them to put equipment, if you go in the concession stand, all the equipment's in there, because there is no room. We've had three businesses that have stepped up to completely pay for a full shed. We're now gonna work on volunteers to get them built, once we get the permit, they're gonna go in the exact location of where the current ones are. But we've also had additional funds come in from other people, other businesses, to help with the new flagpole, and I've had somebody reach out that wants to specifically get some new backboards in there for the basketball courts, so the fundraising is slowly taking off. As it, as it goes, we're gonna knock off some of this list, little by little.
Let me, let me ask your opinion and obviously the boards, but where the house used to be on the left, when you drive in off of Route ninety, that is now a parking lot, it, it's only accessible from the inside. So if the gates are closed, what happens, people park out
On the road.
On the road in front of the gates. Why wouldn't it make more sense to have, like your walking trails, have access to this little mini parking lot that's off of the road, not in front of the gates? You know, they've got it sort of backwards.
So one of the, one of the members on the committee has expressed interest in potentially putting a walking trail around there, so if there's parents that during an event, there's a small break, they can walk the trails. I know the committee, we meet in next week, next Wednesday. One of the topics that we are also gonna look at is potentially speaking with Maria Libby and the school about the land in between the high school and the Marge Jones facility for a potential soccer field, that could be co-used by both, that would open it up to even more potential. So that is something that we've already, the next meeting, we are gonna be discussing that as well. The gate situation.
But you should put that on, and that was my house, by the way. But you should, you should put that on, I mean, they put basically a, I don't know, a barrier, it's dirt, but, I mean, if you had access from ninety to your point, when those gates are closed, it gives you that ability for someone to park off ninety and walk out to the fields and walk their dog or do whatever.
That would be, again, whether we have to hire a contractor, again, I know highway's strong in a million different directions. It would take very little, though, to get that parking lot, I think a few years back, they did put gravel in there because of the overflow.
All gravelled, yes.
But it hasn't been, nothing's been done with it.
You need an entrance, but it's probably overgrown now, but.
I'm sure we could find someone that would help with relocating that gate, I know I have all the supplies for the gate, we're redoing the gate, as in, we're taking all of the paint off, the reflective stickers, so we have brand-new paint that's going on, we're gonna put all new reflective on the gate eventually, but I'll see if we can potentially get it relocated back, it's only about fifty feet to where that entrance is.
The last time that Marge Jones field sign had any vegetation maintenance, they had the highway crew go in and cut the bush that was there?
Like I said, Craig Mitchell, Rockport Landscaping, has donated the time, they're just waiting for things to settle down with what they're doing. And they're gonna go in and they're gonna completely tear the entire thing out, the bushes that are in there are not real bushes, he's gonna install some annual, I guess, I'm not sure, I'm not a gardener either, but he is gonna get some stuff in there.
Yes, he'll take care of it.
Yeah, he's gonna make it, some stuff will grow back, it'll look good, and, and help maintain that as well.
Will be great.
Thank you.
All right, we do have another action item also in regards to the recreation field, so.
Want me to read it?
Or John, any comments you wanna make on that before we
Yeah, just very quickly, so as Jason rightly noted, we've, we've received almost nine thousand dollars in donations. Which speaks a lot to the generosity of, not of the people and the businesses in our community, but also, we have members who played there, you know, we have new members who played there as kids, and, and now they wanna give back.
That's so cool.
It's, I mean, that's what this is about, right? And, you know, we talk about the R E S property and, and what that means, and people, you know, what should happen, there's a very emotional thing. For people who grew up and played on that Marge Jones field, they have that same attachment, so it's so great that businesses are, either they're helping out with, with their own, you know, elbow grease, but, but also sometimes financially helping towards that end as well. As, as you all know, this effort is continuing, Chief is continuing to talk with, and there are another, others out there who want to contribute to this above and beyond this almost nine thousand dollars that we're talking about tonight. So the purpose of this article, this, this action item here is to effectively allow us to move forward and try to get some of those things done in between your meetings, and, and so that way, we can go ahead, if we receive those funds, we can go ahead and start moving. We've already agreed to spend the funds, but this is just lessens the amount we remove from the, from the reserve, because as, when you turn, look to the supporting information here, and look at the items, the capital needs, these certainly will exhaust what we would have in the reserve, so we need, yes, we need to have some, having the support from the community is just that much less, we have to come back to the taxpayers to ask for. But also, clearly, we're going to need to ensure that we continue to put money aside in our budget for reserve funds, because these needs are, are gonna be, probably beyond what most, most contributions would be, and that's just the way I look at it. So the idea, again, of this question is really just to thank those, these, these entities and individuals and businesses for their, their contribution. And then secondly, the second part of the motion that I wrote up here, would be to authorize me to accept on the board's behalf, so that this work could, could get going in between meetings. And then we put it back on your, on your agenda for acceptance, full acceptance. So you're due to meet again on November first.
Yes.
We put that back on the agenda so that, you know, everyone at home can understand who's gifting those funds. But those funds are going towards the needs that we've already outlined here, so there really isn't, you know, we're not gonna, you know, buy, no one's gonna be able to donate, you know, fifty thousand dollars for a golden, you know, palace, that would be donated there, that's not on the list. So it's, it's really a very narrow area that these, these funds could be contributed for.
And I know, I have talked to several people that are willing to help, but they wanna see commitment from the town. The big question and comment had been, the town hasn't put the commitment in, so when the town puts commitment in, showing that they're gonna put money in and get this back to where it is, then I'm willing to help as well. The big thing that you have to understand, if you look through the contracts from all these companies, especially Sports Field of Maine, it's a big number right now, and it is at least all the way through next fall because of the, the condition, there isn't even grass there, it's crabgrass and weeds on the field. It's gonna take a full year of them killing everything off to get everything back to where it is, so the same thing with Farley, the same thing with Tom Fence, there's a big number that they gotta get fixed. Once they get it fixed and they maintain it, all these numbers are gonna drop significantly. And then it's just a yearly contract to do the maintenance and, and things of that nature.
But they're just gonna get bigger if we don't.
If we don't, then it's gonna be a massive number or a massive liability.
And there is one item I do wanna mention, we have, Chief has talked with the individuals who run the organizations that are using those fields presently, the Little League, Penn Bay Soccer, Babe Ruth, American Legion, MRC. All of them wanna participate in some way, perhaps even financially as well. So this isn't just, we're gonna spend more, and, and yes, there's some, I think, responsibility as us as a town to make sure those, those fields are safe and, and do what we expect them to do. But there's, I think, there needs to be, you know, some involvement for those agencies to make sure we're providing a place for those, those groups to work, and it's not as if they're not charging for their entities. I can tell you, I paid several years to Penn Bay Soccer for my kid to play on those fields, and I, and gladly so, and I don't cheat it as well. Those are, those are funds that if I know, as a, as a parent, would I pay ten dollars more so that I know those fields are taken care of? Yes, I would. Twenty dollars more, yes, I would. Not everyone can do that, but those entities can.
Part of the conversation I had with Bill back in February, March, whatever it was, was he got the, the roofs shingled, because the asphalt shingles were missing in some cases, so we got that done through the highway, whatever. You know, you had, someone had contacted the Little League and we were gonna supply them with the paint, the brushes and stuff, so stain, so that they could do that, so we were already reaching out to them, and it's just, this rolls it much faster towards it.
So I've talked to, not necessarily the president, but the boards of almost all of these, including the Legion. All of them are gonna be willing to pay some type of a field usage fee. The committee meets again next Wednesday, it's something we're gonna discuss to come up with an amount, what I explained, though, is if we do this, I can assure you, I will get the board's approval that one hundred percent of what you pay goes right back into that same field. Part of the painting staining, I have been working with Brian Fitzpatrick, who's also on the board. He's agreed to bring his crew in, whether it's once every three years, as long as we pay for the supplies, they will come in with their spray guns, and usually in about three hours, they can have the entire complex completely knocked out. So that's something we're gonna put on a, a maintenance schedule, so the buildings will be painted every three years, so what I'm working at is getting a contract basically set up for every one of these items to be done, no matter whether I'm here or not. The budget will be set, so that the money's there, the contractors know when they're coming in, when they're supposed to do it, and it'll be, take, hopefully manage itself mostly. And we are gonna work on Diane and, and myself and Brandy from Highway, we're gonna get a new schedule, calendar, I should say, that will be interactive, and people from the community come in and look. I've already told all the leagues that I'm gonna need at least a month's notice of what their schedule is for the year, and I don't care if it's the Noxious playing the Lions, but Little League from four-thirty to seven-thirty, which night, so that way anybody can look on it, see when, when they're open, when they're being used.
Good idea.
I mean, that was one of the questions I had, because I'm sort of ashamed to say that I never knew who organized the use of the field. I just don't think we had anybody really doing it.
Brandy at Highway was handling some of those things, but, again, it's, it's one of those things where I think we're, we're trying to up the game for everybody, and to have these leagues have to contribute in some ways, it probably is all the benefit to them as well, to say, they know when they're gonna be there, and also when they're not gonna be there, because if those kids wanna go over and, and pitch, you know, on that diamond or whatever, when there isn't a game and they don't know, they can look it up online.
I mean, I hate to, hate to say it, but I don't in some ways, I mean, with the talk of the soccer field between, you know, with Maria Libby and the coordination there, and the potential for the R E S field to go away, we do need to be stepping up and, and finding a better place for people to play, so.
I was, I spent a good morning after I got done with everything with the fire department, calling every landowner from, I think the Rocklandine Old County, Route one ninety, I reached out to many, many entities to see if there's any even potentials out there. John and I met with Craig from MRC, there is also a possibility, they're gonna be putting in a full complex, they just received fifteen acres, I believe. I think it was like fifteen additional acres on their property, they're gonna be building all brand-new tennis courts, and part of that is the potential for the town to work in conjunction with them for a sports field there as well. So I know, I've, I've looked into all the different properties along Route ninety and one mostly to see.
And I, and I still am not sure that Bill, with great vigor, approached the D O T about that lot in a swap with us, so that they'll have a place, but that D O T lot being positioned.
When Rick Bates was here, I know someone had reached out to them in reference to potentially putting a fire department there. And at the time, this was many years ago, the D O T had clearly stated that unless you can find us another parcel of land on Route ninety, we would not you know, do anything with this, because that's their storage facility, I believe. So unless they had another facility, another location that they could build, then they wouldn't, at that time, enter into any type of negotiations. But that was, again, many moons ago.
And I would just, and I know we wanna move on, but I just wanna say, the R E S fields, I grew up playing there, you grew up playing there, we, you know, that's, you grew up playing there as well. And it was, it was great for that time. But as somebody whose kids now are playing on that, have played on that field, it's not a great situation to be on the corner of Route ninety and Route one. So, I don't know, we were maybe crazy back in the eighties and nineties or something, I don't know, but it, it's not an ideal situation, and it's ideal from a motorist driving by and saying, "Hey, isn't it great to look at those kids playing soccer out there?", like I passed by coming in here tonight. It makes you feel, it makes your heart feel full.
From a safety perspective?
From a safety, not so great, exactly. So we have to be, you know, cognizant of that, and I, I appreciate Dez's comments, because it is, there's an emotional attachment to that field as a sports field. But the kids that are playing now, and, and Thomas, as, as a new member, his experiences are as much probably as, as mine are on those R E S, on, on the Marge Jones fields. And that's the type of experience that I think we need to, for pursuing as a town, safe, out of the way, easy to maintain. Those fields on R E S are not well-maintained, and, and purposely so, that's not our, that's not what we're trying to do there, we're trying to do that really at Marge Jones.
Having said that, I move the board gratefully accept donations to the Marge Jones Recreation Field from McCormick and Associates in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars, Pitch and Friends of Penn Bay Soccer in the amount of twenty-one hundred dollars, Harbor Builders in the amount of five hundred dollars, Samantha Mortlock in the amount of five hundred dollars, Fi Home Designs in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars, Pacific Engine Company in the amount of three thousand dollars, thank you, Jason and crew. And authorize, and authorize the town manager to accept gifts for the select board's behalf for the Marge Jones Recreation Field, which would reduce the amount required from the Recreation Field Reserve to fund the items described in item B. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Great job, Jason, thank you. Looking forward to seeing the progress.
Very happy to see people, yep, helping out.
Absolutely. Thank you to everyone that has donated, and if anyone else is interested, Jason would love to talk with you. Thanks, Jason. All right, next item is ACT on Maine P E R S.
Yeah, those are the Maine PERS, for those of us, it's municipal bureaucrats. The, the, the long and the short of this is that federal law changed recently, and the Maine PERS board of trustees act accordingly. Maine PERS is the defined benefit pension plan that many municipalities and public employees in the state enjoy. Many of our, we have many employees who are part of this program, some are not, some are, you know, contribute, receive a contribution to VALEC or some of these, you know, 401K-type plans. But this is our defined benefit plan, and because of the way that program works, it's a little different than, you know, some of those that are more of the, as I said, the VALEC, the 401K-type. So as a result of these changes, we have, we now have to offer inclusion into these plans by those who have previously declined involvement. And so here, as you go through, kind of what this, what is described here is, we have to create a new opportunity of where, effectively, an open enrollment period, for those who kind of, on the, on the health insurance side of it. An open enrollment period for individuals who have previously declined to potentially rejoin or to join the Maine PERS system. As you may know, the Maine PERS defined benefit basically has two components, there is a, a contribution from the town side, which I believe is seven point nine percent. And then there's an employee contribution, which is, Mark, you might remember.
I was gonna say four or five.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that sounds right. So, so there's, there's a, there's a, there's a kind of a, both parts involved in this. So if someone were to opt into this plan, not only will this, this will have some impact on our budget, because it would be a higher level contribution, that we're currently contributing on that employee's behalf. But also, there will be likely a slightly higher contribution on the employee, employer's behalf as well, so this is the plan, this is what we have available, and we, this is kind of a pro forma. There's not really much we can do to change the action of the Maine PERS Board of Trustees, nor the federal law, but they need our, our board say so. PERS Board of Trustees nor the federal law, but they need our, our board say so to allow us to begin that open enrollment period.
So, once you put your feelers out to find out who has an interest or not, maybe you already have. And let's just say there's a significant number. I don't even, you know, whatever it is. Will, will someone, or should we have, offer to have someone come down and explain that to them from main PERS?
Yeah.
I mean, but you know, just so that they get a full grasp of what they're getting involved in.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll, and I don't know of your experience, but my experience of main PERS is, is one that the explanation part has always been a difficult thing to come by sometimes. They, they don't excel at that. They excel at paying out the benefits and, and receiving the contributions from the employer and employee. They do their, that part pretty well, but the explaining new employees or employers into that system is, is a bit of a challenge.
One thing that, that I, I think I'd mentioned to you, I, I know I mentioned it to Bill was, you know, there are different plans that you can be enrolled in. And I think Rockport's plan is whatever you get on your first retirement paycheck is what you'll get in your 31st year retirement check. There's no cost of living increase that's offered along the way. I mean, it does cost a little bit more for the, for the employee to be part of that, but you know, I mean, you know, when you get a 2% here or a 3% there or 1% along the way, that adds up. And I don't know whether, I, I don't know whether we can offer, do we have to continually offer the same plan or can we offer them to be in one or the other? I mean, if you wanted to be in the one that you didn't get any cost of living, but yet when I came on, I wanted to. I mean, I, to me, I mean, that's a, it, it's hard to think of that when you're a young employee, but down the road.
It's a big difference.
Right. It'll make a significant difference. So I just don't know whether that's something that might be asked. And, and if we can, if we can author, offer either or, don't know.
That, no, that's a great, that's a great question. I, I don't know the answer. I mean, I, and some of you may have seen social security rate is due to, you know, increased by 6% for the cost of living adjustment in social security as of October 1st. That will have a sizable impact for those on fixed incomes. Those who, who were not having, who do not have a, a sort of that adjustment, if you were on a, you know, on a, you know, defined benefit plan such as that, well, that's, that's difficult to deal with inflation in that way. So I'll, I'll ask, I'll see what our options are. I'm not sure.
It may be something that the town had enrolled in and, and that's what you're stuck with. But if there is an option, and maybe if there, you know, the, because I think if you're already in the, the old plan, you can't get out of it.
I think you're right.
Probably not. But if you're going to newly enroll.
With these new enrollees.
Maybe there's an option. Yeah.
And, and if you check with whoever might come down and talk to them, and they could say you could do this or that.
Well, I, I think that's, so, and, and I think I mentioned, as part of one of my goals is to look at the personnel policy. We've been working on that this week. Megan and I have been working on that. I mean, there's a lot of things that are kind of in that same sort of vein of allowing choice. And the options available to us as an employer in 2021 are a lot different than they were in 91 and 2001. So trying to be somewhat modern in our off, in our offerings, you know, and, and taking into consideration that choice is, and it also can benefit the town financially as well to make the right choices too. You know, for example, just looking at, you know, the issue of main PERS, and I don't mean to speak ill of main PERS, but the amount of, the contribution levels that it takes to be in the main PERS system are, if just on a, on a budget basis for the town, it costs us more to have someone in the main PERS system than it does to offer someone who signs up through VALEC. That's probably not a good situation for the town of Rockport. Financially, it's great to offer defined benefit, but it creates, it, it creates, you know, some issues there. And so it's not to mention, it's a difficult program to run. So those are all things that I've been thinking about and I expect I'll have something for you later on.
And it's one of those, and I promise this is my last on this, but it, it's one of the things that if you can provide something for an employee that says, hey, you know, I don't get this somewhere else and this is kind of good, so let's stay here.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yep. Totally agree. Now I'm done.
All right. With that, do we have a motion?
I move the board adopt the provisions of five MRS, section 18, 252 dash C, P Public Law 2021, chapter 286, as allowed by main PERS rule, chapter 803.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Approved. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up with the right language.
I wrote it out myself.
We'd never be able to come up with that.
We'll have something to sign on that. So we'll get that done. Next, we are going to act on the pest management policy.
Yes. So this is, we currently have a pest management policy. Unfortunately, the policy we have, it calls for the creation of a committee and the committee is involved with people from the school and, and it's, it's a very big policy that, to, to use for, for how often it's used. And as we're looking at the committees, this was one where it seemed, there's got to be a better way to do this. So I looked at the town of Kennebunk and Kennebunk has almost word for word, you know, the same policy. The difference is they didn't have a committee involved. And so effectively what the pest management policy does is it says, there are, there are things you do not want to use on, on properties and, and you should be careful and you should make your citizens and residents aware of the use of harmful chemicals and, and chemicals that, that can be, you know, damaging the environment. And we should make people aware of that, when and if we do need to use them. And so what this policy effectively does is it creates that same framework, but it removes the need for a committee to do so. So it's, three chamber? No, I'm just kidding. So anyway, it's, the policies, again, it's in terms of definitions and, and types of use, it's identical to what we had before, but the, the removal of the committee aspect is really the, is the only change. What we haven't done here, and, and one thing that, when this initially started in 2008, again, talking about another different world, really we weren't dealing with brown-tailed moths at that point.
Poison ivy.
It poison, that was my, yeah, poison ivy. We have poison ivy all over the place.
Mark Street.
Yes. Yes, exactly. Over by, you know, the, the park over on, in Glen Cove, the Boy Scout Trail over here in the harbor. You know, there are, not to mention, we're, we're talking about the brown-tailed moth over in the Marge Jones field. The issue with this policy, or even the prior policy, is that really its purpose is to let individuals know, hey, we've, we've applied a substance here that isn't, isn't probably something you want to have on your dining room table. And, and make you aware of it before and after that it's been applied for a period of time. That's what's called for in here. And, and then after that point in time, obviously it's, it's applied and hopefully you have the desired effects. As we all know, it's very difficult to deal with poison ivy. It's very difficult to deal with brown-tailed moths and it's very difficult to deal with any number of different pest ticks as well. Again, these are all things that last 13 years that have really changed how we operate with nature. And so it, it just, my thought is that this policy needed to be a little bit less onerous in terms of our management, but, but retain the importance of making people aware.
Posting signage.
And, and right.
We can.
Considering what you're going to use.
We can, we can require anyone that does the contracted work for us in their agreement to put out the signage. I mean.
Absolutely.
Just stay away from.
Right.
Yeah, they should. We're just, we just don't want to have to get into putting it out ourselves.
And my question is, here would be, does this, I know it says organic pest management. Is that our hope here that we won't be using heavy chemicals? Cause I know specifically like Vicki Duder had put in a, you know, the bills to say, you know, let's get rid of Roundup and things like that, which I'm not opposed to doing. So I mean, are we trying to focus on, you know?
We have the three categories.
Yeah. I mean, I just want to make sure we're still in compliance with whatever changes came about through, through that. I don't see anything that wouldn't be, but.
Yeah. I mean, because we're saying other applicable laws. So, so I think we're saying that we will, it will not, we will not basically go against any other statutes or fire codes or regulations.
Okay. Without me trying to sit here and decipher it in my head at this point.
Ideally, probably we would like to use, you know, the safest, organic. Sometimes that doesn't necessarily work for the pest or the invasive species, but we will make sure we're in compliance with all laws, rules and regulations.
That's exactly right. And this is identical to what we've had before. The, the key is that the emergency situations, when they do crop up, we have to deal with it in a safe way for our, for our residents. And unfortunately, that sometimes may mean we have to use chemicals that aren't, aren't great, but, but it's limited and it's targeted and it's not just, you know, the old days of DDT all over the place. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's not what we're talking about here. We want to be, you know, good stewards of the environment here.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
I move the board adopt the pest management policy as presented. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
So there's this one little, just I guess I had to return.
Okay. That was the last action item. Do we have any discussion items? Seeing none. Select board liaison reports. Mark, do you want to start?
Nothing.
Okay. Eric?
I don't. We've had ours. We've had mine tonight. Pretty much both of them.
None for mine. Comprehensive committee meets Thursday. Denise?
Legacy Rockport. I think in John's report, we've got the lime cones. Got some work going on there and the Vulcan is getting restored. Lots of exciting, good things happening there.
I don't think I mentioned that the asbestos has been dealt with.
Oh, good.
So there was something starting out a few, I know that there's asbestos inside the, the end, the Vulcan. And, and we, that was part of that plan was to encapsulate that asbestos. So it's, that's, there was a tent up and that's now done. So we're safe there.
That's great.
For those that want to, to know or whatever, I, one thing that Jonathan had lined up the other day and finally got on the calendar was the EMS meeting on the 28th of October. If anybody has an interest, sign up for Zoom and we'll, we'll have a little fun get together.
I know that's been a while coming. So glad that, to hear that that's on the agenda.
They email me. I'll see if I can put it in.
I was gonna, I had another.
I'll forget to email.
So the parks committee is doing the cleanup. They've been out. I think where the goal was to try to get all that done before the leaves fell. So they've been up and down the streets of Rockport picking up trash. Not just them alone, but a lot of other, a lot of volunteers in the town. And, and then the parks committee is also sort of doing what they call their SWAT reports of the different parks, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, trouble, and lots of stuff, lots of good works with, with Mike Young and the public works on keeping our parks looking good. So.
Great. All right. Thank you. All right. With that, can I get a motion for us to move into wastewater commissioners?
I move the board go into wastewater commissioners.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. We are now in the capacity of wastewater commissioners. John?
So at your last meeting, you had voted to hire Woodward and Kern to conduct a preliminary engineering report on the possibility and feasibility of installing sewer along Route 90. After that meeting, we were unpleasantly informed by the, the good folks who run the EDA program, grant program, seems to be a continuing trend lately, that the, to contract with Woodward and Kern could potentially put future funding in jeopardy because of who writes the report as opposed to who provides the design specifications for construction. And, and so it was, it seemed easiest at this point to rescind and ask the board to reconsider their motion to, and rescind effectively that contract. I spoke with, with Nate at Woodward and Kern. He has no issues with, with doing so. Obviously he sees the value in us seeking the most possible benefit financially for us in that EDA process. So we are looking at alternatives in terms of how this, how that report could be structured, who we could work with to provide that report. It, it needs to be an engineer in some cases, but we need to have someone who obviously can, can do that analysis that we need and then have that as part of our application in March. So we are still working on that project, but obviously this, this, this contract would need to be rescinded for us to, you know, take them to the next steps.
Have the best chance for the grant.
Exactly. Yeah.
All right. Well.
All right. Easy come, easy go. Let's see.
Unfortunately.
So I don't, how's the Route 1 project coming?
Going well. It is expected that cold weather is going to hit. This just in. Yeah, I don't know if you heard, right? So there, as you all know, that the idea is effectively to, to complete both sides, the beginning and the end of the stretch that they're working on. And there will be an area in the middle roughly where Oakland Park, Bully Lanes are down east, that area, that will probably not be completed this, this fall. The lines may get in, may, may not get in, but the hope is that at least that would be blasted and, and cleaned out. So all they would have to do is lay the line in the, in the spring. I think there's about 45 days left of contract. It would be expected 45 to 50 days of contract, depending upon when they wrap up. So the idea that would just be tacked on obviously in the spring. That will be the most disruptive part because that's when they'll be going across to do services on either side of, of Route 1. But hopefully if, depending upon when weather hits, or when weather improves, I should say, in the spring, that should provide opportunity, if it's early enough, to be able to get that done well before July 4th holiday. So it's, I think it's about to be expected honestly, in terms of how far they've gone. Right now they're working, as anyone who's been along that Route 1 stretch, so they've, they've been working past, you know, Rockville Street and we're kind of working back towards Plants Unlimited on the south end, or excuse me, the north end, on the south end, moving past the, the Penn Bay Hospital intersection and towards South Street. That part should move a little bit quicker, but that middle section is, is you've probably have all seen blasting and the like. It's just a challenge. And what it also, what I was hearing from the contractor is we had our construction meeting this past week. It seems that they did the test borings outside of the travel lanes. So, you know, they did the tests, like, yep, looks good, looks good. But where the asphalt is, is where the ledge is. So it drops right off. So, oh, looks great. And then you get over two feet and then ledge. So that's not great. That's not what you want to have happen, but.
We are Rockport.
We, it's in the name, right? Right? Yeah. So there's, there's, that's slowing things down a bit and it's, it's not going to be, there will be more blasting unfortunately. But it's, it is moving ahead, I think. And, and I think kudos to Nitram, who's, who's the contractor doing the work. They're doing a really good job of not just completing the work and, and getting, laying the pipes and, and all that, but they're also cleaning up really well, I think.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, it doesn't, you know, Friday afternoon, it's like.
I noticed that on my way through Friday afternoon is, I thought, wow, for as much construction that's been going on, on Route 1 this summer, it, it doesn't appear, it doesn't look that way. I mean, obviously there's cones, there's signs, there's equipment, but I think they really have done a nice job of, of cleaning, cleaning that up.
In fact, not leaving a lot of pile of rocks and dirt in the road is nice.
Yeah, I agree. All right. Can we get a motion?
I move the board reconsider. Is that what we?
Wouldn't it be to rescind?
I think rescind, yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Cause we're, I move the board rescind the vote to approve a contract with Woodward and Kern to complete a preliminary engineering report for the Route 90 sewer expansion.
Second thought?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Do you need a motion for us to go back into? Do you need a motion for us to go back into?
I move the board exit. I move the board exit wastewater commissioners back into regular session.
And second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I move the board.
Now we need a motion.
I move the board go into executive session pursuant to one M R S A, section four oh five, section six C.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
What are you talking about?
First, we are in executive session. So if you can.